Stand with us and let's begin with a word of prayer and then if you will remain standing would like you to join us in the pledge to the flag. And then we'll get the meeting underway. Uh, I'll call on Commissioner from District One, Kenneth Northy to open the meeting with prayer. Let's bow together.
Lord, I want to thank you for this day to come together. I pray that you'll just watch over us as we do this business. And we do the things best for the community, the county, and this area of the state. Lord, I just ask you just watch over us all and pray for good health. Pray for us during these times of sickness that people are facing and other things that they're facing in their life as well, not just at this COVID. But pray your blessings on each one and their special needs, Lord. Thank you again for what you allow us to do, because all thing is yours. Amen.
Amen. Join us if you will in the pledge to the flag. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks so much. Please be seated. So the agendas. So the agendas on the board, you can follow along with what's going on today. We certainly appreciate your interest in the business of the county and the commission. And uh, we just appreciate you being here, being in attendance today. We do have a scheduled public hearing. We advertised as required in the newspaper uh, that we would have a public hearing regarding lodging tax abatement. Proposal that we'll be considering a little later in this meeting for a specific project. Is there anyone here that uh, would like to address the commission? Relative to this, this issue, the lodging tax abatement? I know we have some that are here out of interest about that program, so uh, we'll, we'll try to be flexible and if there's a question. That arises, you know, we'll try to address that. If something comes to mind, don't hesitate to speak up. Uh. Anybody at all? Okay, there is an item of business later that will be specifically on point to this. I will, we'll point out for those in attendance that at our previous meeting. At our last meeting, we, the commission adopted a general policy. On an abatement program specific for lodgings investments. And uh, we have a lot of providers of lodging throughout the county now. I have personally have several clients that are in that business and they do a great job. I appreciate them and their contribution to the community, either directly through their place of business or through their uh, involvement in our community and our schools and so forth. This, this particular abatement program is not specific to them unless they would like to step up and take advantage of it. But under uh, constitutional provisions, that uh, it's a local provision. We have the authority to make some abatements on, on programs, development, economic development programs. So. That's what the commission is attempting to do. So we have agreed in a general sense to uh, bait uh, lodging tax. In a tiered system depending on the investment that's made in the project. And we're, we're offering that, putting that on the table for thirty-six months so that folks like uh, John Thompson from the city of Andalusia, our economic developers, Op Florilla. Can, can know what they can go to an investor and, and discuss because we've already made the commitment. And then on a case by case basis, we can do that minimum amount and possibly more depending on what the, uh, what the investment. Might, might enlist from us. So.
Just a correction. We had a public meeting, not a public hearing. We don't have to do the.
Okay, alright. So, so she is, she's telling me that, that this, this hearing is, we're inviting pu- uh, public comment at this public meeting. So. Uh, okay. But we, and we did advertise that. So if there are no comments directly on that, we'll just move into the rest of the meeting. Alright. Next item on the agenda is uh, public comment from citizens and we have none scheduled. Uh, no awards and presentations. Public comments from other elected or appointed officials and we do have two or three with us today. We'll uh, go probate judge first. Judge, do you have anything you want to bring to the commission? Alright, thank you for being here. Uh, Chuck Patterson, Revenue Commissioner? Okay, collections are well underway?
Yes, sir.
Good. Uh, John Thompson from City of Andalusia, do you have comment? You'd like to make it this time? Things are good with the city?
Yes, sir.
Good. We appreciate you being here. And uh, the sheriff is here. Sheriff, do you have anything you want to bring at this time or wait till later in the meeting?
No, everything's fine.
Good, thank you. We appreciate all of you being here. Uh. Commissioner's consent agenda has minutes from the December fourteenth meeting. It was a regular meeting and then we also have the council payroll and payroll for December twenty-one. You've had a chance to review those because these items were emailed to you a couple of days ago. We'll call for any corrections or adjustments, changes, or a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve. Alright. Is there a second? Motion second, nobody else had a correction you want to point out? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sound like three to nothing that passed. Thank you. Under old business, we uh, need to consider board appointments for the Department of Human Resources Board. Commissioner's page twenty-nine in your packet has. The information relative to that appointment. We brought it up before. There's uh, one person that's listed here whose term has expired. Rosalyn Wright does not want to be reappointed. Right below that, Debbie Smith has been submitted as a, a nominee for consideration to be appointed. This is an important board. We get very little out of it, but I know that within that department, DHR, it's an important board for them and they, they appreciate people that are contributing. And active participants in, in their meetings and, and the business of the DHR. So uh, we have the name of Debbie Smith to consider. Does anybody else have another name or do somebody want to move that we appoint Ms. Smith?
I move.
Alright, shall we appoint Ms. Smith? Yeah, I think Ms. Smith is from the Op area, Kenneth, so that's your.
I was wondering if that was a Debbie from Mont Bel. That should make, she'd be good.
Okay. And there'll still be one that'll need to be considered and unless y'all have a name to consider, it's kind of presently represented by the, in the red level, somebody from the red level district. If you want to bring a name, it wouldn't be inappropriate at this time, or we'll consider one at the next meeting. Okay? So there's a, a motion to uh, appoint Debbie Smith. Is there a second? I guess by saying that was good, that'd be second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Alright, nothing else? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alright, Ms. Debbie Smith is appointed. We'll notify her and the Department of Human Resources. Uh, Sheriff, under old business, the next item is a resolution of support uh, relative to pistol permits. And uh, you had come to us at the last meeting and asked us to consider taking action on that. And the uh, resolution that we have drafted, I'd like to read it so that we all are on the same page. Here, if there's anything that, that is contrary to what you would expect, I've added just a couple of things at the very bottom of that. So I'll get with you on that as a, in the final version. I'll read it as I have it corrected if y'all want to follow along. Whereas Covington County Commission is fully supportive of the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. And simultaneously recognizes the importance of protecting the welfare and safety of all Covington County citizens and. Whereas the Covington County Commission recognizes and fully supports the efforts of Covington County Sheriff in protecting public safety in Covington County and. Whereas it is the legal duty of the Covington County Sheriff to issue concealed carry pistol permits. To all Covington County residents who are duly qualified under the law to possess a pistol and whereas Covington County Commission recognizes the importance of the Covington County Sheriff's. Ability to deny the issuance, the, to deny the issuance of a pistol permit and fully supports his ongoing efforts to do so and. Whereas any effort by the Alabama Legislature or any other entity to affect the Covington County Sheriff's ability to ensure that only qualified persons receive and keep a concealed carry pistol permit is dangerous to our citizens, to our law enforcement officers, and is contrary to good public policy. So let me, let me reread that because that's kind of the key. Uh. Any efforts by the Alabama Legislature or any other entity to affect the Covington County Sheriff's ability to ensure that only qualified persons receive and keep a concealed carry pistol permit. Reason for that is because it's dangerous to our citizens, our law enforcement officers, and contrary to good public policy and going on. Whereas any effort by the Alabama Legislature or any other entity to eliminate the necessity of citizens to obtain a concealed carry pistol permit or any effort to curtail. The Covington County Sheriff's ability to ensure that only qualified persons receive and keep a concealed carry pistol permit would also cause the Covington County Sheriff to lose a substantial amount of his or. Operating funds and as a result drastically affect the ability to fulfill his or duty to, of ensuring public safety. And whereas the Covington County Commission expresses its full support of the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and its application to all citizens of Covington County, comma, and reaffirm. Our obligation to promote public safety for all Covington County citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Covington County Commission fully supports the Covington County Sheriff and his office. In their efforts to promote and ensure the safety and welfare of the citizens of Covington County. And that the commission opposes efforts by the Alabama Legislature or any other entity or organization to affect the Covington County Sheriff's ability to provide the safety and welfare of all Covington County citizens. Comma, particularly in efforts to eliminate the necessity for obtaining a concealed carry pistol permit. And witness whereof, the commission has caused this resolution to be executed today. So slight changes in a little wording, but the meaning of it is the same that we support the efforts of the uh. Our sheriff and sheriffs across the state to retain the ability and the responsibility to issue concealed carry permits. As opposed to an effort that is underway to say that uh, there's constitutional right to carry and therefore there should not be a permitting. I, I heard a number in the last week or two, uh, where in the state of Alabama in, in the last year, there were X number of, of declined permit applications. Do you know a number on that sheriff? It was in the thousands that I heard. It, it seems to me it was six or seven thousand.
I seen it the other day, I think it was six thousand.
Yeah.
That were denied by the.
So there's a reason those were denied there and I think that's an important thing for all of us because if those six or seven thousand have concealed or stopped with a weapon on their person without a permit. Under the proposed rules, they could just carry on, then, you know, no, yes, sir. You may, yeah, please, please do. This is your, your issue.
The, the importance to, to remember with the uh, with the concealed carry permit. As far as constitutional carry, we all have a constitutional right to carry a weapon. We, we do. Carry it open, open wherever one can see it. But the concealed part is, is what concerns us. Uh. Bad guys are not going to go through the trouble to getting a pistol permit. And by having concealed carry permit, it gives us the tool that we need to be able to check. And get these guys, the, the criminals, get it out of their hands and effect an arrest when necessary. As I said last time, Timothy McVeigh was arrested because he didn't have a pistol permit ninety minutes after he bombed the Oklahoma City building. So it's a very important tool for us to have and without that tool, it's going, it, it will put the citizens at risk, uh, at, the citizens at, at danger. Okay, so.
Any questions for the sheriff on this here?
You was talking about the uh, constitutional carry versus the concealed.
Right.
Uh, when you say constitutional carry, as long as it's open to sight where people can see it, you can have a gun?
Yes.
No words, if it's laying out and you see it or?
No.
Or is it, how's it got to be where you put, explain that so people understand?
Constitutional carry, everyone has the right to carry a, a, let's say a pistol on their side in the open. Whenever the, whenever the, the owner of that pistol sits down, gets in the car, it becomes concealed.
Okay.
Now there are steps you can take to take the weapon and, and secure it in the car where it wouldn't be considered a concealed weapon, but if it's in the car within driver's reach, it is considered a concealed weapon. And that's part of, if you, if you, if you're walking and you got one on your side and you cover it up with your jacket, it becomes concealed. Uh, the, the rules are pretty, pretty plain about that. Uh. That, that's where, that right there is what gives us the tools that we need, not to harass. Well, we're not into harassing people, but we are into, to ensuring that. People who have these weapons and don't need them, get them taken and we, we take care of it properly. It's, it would really hinder, it would really hinder law. It's not just the sheriff's office. It would hinder law enforcement altogether in this state if they done away with concealed carry permits.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Scott, do you have some things you'd like to point out relative to maybe tweaking editing this, something we need to.
I did. I just made some minor changes that gave it a little bit of clarity.
So as we consider this, you heard me cha- uh, read it a little different in a little different form this year. She has a couple of edits to propose. Uh, if you're comfortable, if you're comfortable, we could adopt it with edits uh, that the attorney wants to apply to it.
Which didn't change the meaning or the substance of.
So if it's, if it's uh, the, the mind of the commission, a motion to adopt the resolution would be in order as edited or corrected?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and second. Let's do a roll call vote on this because this is going to be submitted to the legislate, our legislators for, for their purposes. Uh, Michael Smith?
Yes.
Vote yes, alright. Tommy McGahey?
Yes.
Kenneth Northy?
Yes.
Tony Holmes is absent and I support this as well. So if I don't get a vote, but I will support it and sign it. So, alright, that, that resolution passed. Thank y'all.
Thanks, thank you guys. Pretty helpful for that. Great, appreciate it.
Next item is under new business and it's approval of a resolution for lodging tax abatement, pages thirty-one, thirty-two in the, in your packet, Commissioner. Y'all want to hear another resolution read or you just know what's in it? Okay. Let me, let me tell you the uh, just a couple of things I'd like to point out. That this proposal is being submitted to us by the City of Andalusia, who is the lead agency on this. They had approached the commission about joining them and in support of this project that's proposed. Uh, it's uh, identified as, uh, the owner, the developers identified as Wood Properties LLC. And they intend to develop and operate a high-quality hotel in downtown Andalusia. Pursuant to the terms of a development agreement that it becomes an addendum, I guess, to this resolution. And uh, there are certain properties that the City of Andalusia owns and or controls that they can make available to Wood Properties. And uh, Amendment seven twenty-five of the Constitution, if you want to do some reading, that, that is the amendment that gives. Us in Covington County the right to do, take the action that's being contemplated here. Uh, whereas Covington County Commission finds that uh, notice is properly given and of course with the requirements of Amendment seven twenty-five and we offered a chance for public comment at the beginning of this meeting. And uh, the Covington County Commission finds that the proposed development agreement that, that becomes a part hereof will carry out the intent of the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Covington County Commission that the recitals of this resolution are incorporated herein and made a part hereof. The Covington County Commission finds that the attached proposed development agreement will serve a valid sufficient public purpose. Notwithstanding any incidental benefit accruing to any private entity or entities. And the proposed development agreement is approved in substantive form and contents attached here too. And it gives the authority to sign and execute this agreement. Um. Mister, y'all have uh, seen copies of the development agreement proposals, had discussion with the city. What are your thoughts on, on this resolution? I guess our, the only action we're required is to adopt the resolution and then to execute the agreements. Uh. What are your wishes on that?
I, I think it's a great idea. Um, I know myself and Mr. Holmes have met with John and the city and we discussed a lot of the stuff about it and I think it's. It's a win-win situation for everybody to carry.
Okay.
You know, it's going to help bring jobs in and also like, and everybody understand this, a lodging tax. Abatement and not the actual sales tax or anything like that because I had some people call concerned about it being that, but it is just a lodging tax, not anything else. And it's only for a specific period of time.
A lodging tax that we're not getting right now because the project is not here. So, yeah. You got nothing, you get nothing.
There are a lot of, lot of proposed uh, projects, uh, events to bring to our community that struggle to find lodging adequate rooming. Again, uh, I, I know we're probably not operating at a hundred percent occupancy all the time, but, but there are, there are times when everybody's full and people can't find rooms. It's uh, pretty amazing. So the hope is that this will bring enough, this allows larger events to come more often so that all of our rooms are, are filled up more often. Think everybody, I think even, even those currently in the business can benefit from it. And again, this, the same opportunity is on the table for anybody, any current, any property owner to take advantage of. Kenneth, I may have interrupted you as you were about.
No, I'm good. Uh, you know. Pretty much everybody said everything, but you know, we, we bringing in another business and to kind of counter the, the lodging, we are going to be getting property taxes. That's going to be brought into the county. It's going to offset some of this money. So. And that, we're not going to get money from this. It's, we're just kind of rerouting a little bit to try to bring something in, so.
So in the uh, in one of the whereas paragraphs of the resolution, here's what it says. This, this project serves valid sufficient public purposes, including, not limited to the preservation of local jobs, which y'all mentioned. Expansion of the uh, and enhancement of the county's economic and tax base, which y'all have mentioned. Thereby providing additional revenues for who, for schools, for municipal and county services and other public needs and also increased employment opportunities within the county. Also promotion of the county as a center for retail and commercial activity and provision of additional goods and services to the residents of our county. And all of those things y'all touched on, that kind of brings them into a concise statement of fact. I believe all of us believe that that, those are true. So uh. It's a good project. A motion to adopt the resolution would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
A second. There's a motion, second. Any, any more question or comment on it? We got out of order and did the comment before the motion. But that's fine. Nobody objects. That's certainly appropriate. Alright, there's a motion and second to adopt it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. That carry unanimous vote. So, John, if y'all communicate that back to the city and we'll begin with you to uh, to move forward and sign any documents and stuff relative to that. So, thank you. Next item is uh. Consider a franchise agreement. Commissioner's pages thirty-three through forty of your packet, but also, did you pass? You have a, you have a, a recently obtained, a packet has a map on the front and that has a little bit of red letter in it. It ta- it took the original document and uh. Just a few edits laying it side by side with an existing franchise uh, agreement. This was submitted to us for consideration, but I really think, and I've had conversation with somebody, that our franchise agreements ought to be boilerplate. Now look, if there's a cable company coming, it'll all look the same for every cable company. As it is now, they're kind of coming hazardly. And so this is moving this one a lot closer to the one we adopted most recently, Troy Cable. And a couple of changes uh, that I've noted and I'll ask the attorney to kind of make note of it and we'll have to go back to the company to see if they're willing or accepting of it. But uh, on, on the second page of the red letter edition. It uh, in paragraph three, it talks about the terms. Uh, let me go to paragraph two. It, it refers to any permitting that may be required by the grantor. So you're talking about a company coming in and putting in cable and wire. It may be overhead, it may be underground, it may be on existing utility poles or they might put up their own poles. There should be a permitting through the engineering office for that. This didn't reference it, so we've added that. And I think that's expected in Atlanta, isn't that the norm? Okay. Uh, I didn't want them to get the impression they had free run without, without going through the permitting because we need to know where they are and what, what kind of work they're doing to keep an eye on it. The next one on the terms, I, uh, it said that this franchise will automatically extend for an additional five years and I'm proposing we change that additional one years from the expiration date. Unless uh, written notice. At least one year before the expiration of the franchise instead of three years. So. Uh, I just want a chance for the commissioner to respond and with all that's going on and this goes and gathers dust for three or four years. And we failed to give notice, but we got concerns that are raised about it. I want us to be able to get out of it relatively quickly if we need to, not to hinder their business. Uh, page four, just to change from ten days to thirty days relative to a claim of act, or action pursuant to this section. I don't think it changed a whole lot, but it's got it in line with the other one. Uh, most of the changes on page seven, Commissioners, uh, I've asked that when they, they're, they're to submit a franchise fee within ninety days of the end of the calendar year. And, and the wording here just says that that payment should be accompanied by a brief report prepared by their representative showing the basis for the computation. Don't just send us a check. But explain how you got there. You had thirteen hundred customers and you're paying whatever the rate is. And uh, the rate is, in this is five percent. Of, of their net revenue. And then I added a section sixteen on customer service. And again, this mirrors what was in the Troy Cable provision. You know, we're granting a franchise and we just want to have a hands-off approach to it, but I think it's appropriate that we uh. Require, expect that they're going to give uh, their subscribers certain levels of service based on some standards and this references those standards. And then it talks about in the event of a default on the next page eight, talks about in the, in the event of a default of this agreement and here are the ways that, that we can take steps to, to uh. To get out of this uh, franchise agreement. So. I think it's appropriate to, to entertain a motion to adopt, to approve this, subject to conversation between our attorney. And administrator and the company uh, to kind of come to terms on these proposed changes that they have not yet seen. Or at least haven't had a chance to see and respond to, uh, and assuming that they uh, agree in principle to what's there that we would approve it. Unless you think differently. What are your thoughts?
I, I have no problem with it. You know, I mean, you talked earlier a little bit and mentioned that, you know, maybe if we can get, get them along the same lines of everything, that way it's just not. Different something every time and try to have just a, it's more of a standard type agreement with everything. I, I have no problem with it.
I think it's all more or less is in, in favor of the consumer to make sure that they're taken care of and treated right and we have avenues to make sure they are. Ways to get out or do what need to do it.
Anything else? A motion to uh, approve this as suggested. I'll make a motion. Alright, there's a motion and second from Northy? Uh, any other questions, comments on? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alright, that's, here. Next is application for beer, retail beer and wine licensed Tiger Quick Stop. Mr. Smith, that's in your district. What you got?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the Tiger Quick Stop, which actually was Lewis One Stop, just recently sold. Um, they've had a liquor license up there for several years. They've never had any problem with it. I've actually been up there and I've met the new owners and, and do business up there. Everything seems to be in order. It's just another step they have to go through, you know, to, to maintain their own. Their license up there. So I think uh, everything's fine with it. I would recommend or make a motion that we grant it.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody here to speak on that issue particularly that desires to address the commission? If not, uh, there's a motion and second. Nothing else? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Both carries. Next is consider rental fees, establish a rental fee for Point A Campground Recreation Building. Miss Al.
This is the pavilion that's located inside the campground. Uh, we have recently done some renovations to it. We've had um, HVAC system added to the, the building. Just have many upgrades and it's up for uh, basically finished now. We have to get some appliances and after that it will be completed. Uh, recommend to, to set a rental rate on that, on that property at a hundred dollars for the day and have it rent for nine AM to nine PM so that it will not disrupt the campers that are in the campground.
Okay. So it'll be available to the campground users as well as outside if they go through proper channels and there's a rental rate. And we, she uh, needs us to act on that rental rate. So that's the proposed rate. Is there thoughts on that?
Thing is, you know, nine PM, are they going to be gone by nine PM from there or is that when?
That's what we're going to ask so that it will allow the people to leave the premises before the quiet time of the campground.
Was that a motion?
I'm to approve.
There is a motion. Kenneth, second. Michael, anything else?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Next is to consider approving the solicitation of bids for seed fertilizer. Lynn, I guess that's probably yours. Then we have some discussion of curbs and gutter and subdivision. You want to come up just to answer questions as? Lynn, I guess that's probably yours, then we have some discussion of curbs and gutter and subdivision, you wanna come up, just to answer questions as we, as we go through? Is, uh, suppose that this is an annual bid on seed fertilizer, so a motion to, uh, grant the authority to request those bids, the bids, invite those bids would be in order.
That's correct.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. All right, second. Kenneth, look this way and I got you, second by Kenneth. Anybody else have any comments or questions on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same say. All right, that's approved, Lynn. Uh, next is bids for curb and gutter, tell us what, what's-
Uh, no bids received, so we'll just have to negotiate, uh, when it comes time to, to do that. Um, we didn't get a single bid on that.
Where is this going?
We're looking at the one oh seven project, there's a little bit of curb that needs to go there, and then possibly on some of the, um, other items we're working on in the county. Uh, we got a, you know, the Highway Harbor subdivision up near, uh, Gant. Um, the landowners, with that association's put together, um, money to have that, uh, paved, and there'll be some required for that area there as well. So that was the two areas that we're looking to, to use that bid, but we can, we'll just have to solicit our own bids when it gets closer to it. Um, way price are going, I guess, people just wanna get-
Commit to that.
Commit that.
Do we have local people that will do this work for us?
We do. It's something we don't do often, but, uh, we, we, that's the reason I did this, cause it's, it doesn't come up that often, but for these two projects, that was, that was, we're gonna try to use that for that purpose, so.
So would I have anything to reject, there are no bids received?
No, just, just, I would have to just do it again, or either, uh-
I guess my question, Lynn, is i- if we, if we receive no bids, are we required to rebid, or can-
We can, I'm, I'm good with rebid.
Or can we simply negotiate? Uh, I mean, who are you, who do you negotiate with if you got no bids from anyone?
Just have to reach out to some local contractors, but I mean, I would get three bids regardless, I would still do three bids, three proposals. Whether they turn one in or not, but I'll at least put it in their hands to, to get that bid to satisfy the bid law.
We, we wanna make sure that we follow the bid law, so we're gonna ask Karen, you work real closely on that to make sure we don't miss stuff. We need to, we can bring it back up at a later meeting to take action. There's nothing to act on here except there are those bids, uh, we just close that bid and move on.
Okay.
All right, uh, next is, uh, the subdivision on lots one and two, Inspiration Point, what do you have there?
It's, is it, again, it's just, you, you each have a copy of it, it's just, you know, we gave preliminary approval to allow me to go ahead and give the proper advertisements out to, to, to allow the the advertisement of these, uh, uh, let landowners know there's a, uh, it's just part of the subdivision regulations that we do have in place. Um, we'll contact all the joint landowners, uh, to do that. And the plan is met with the requirements, and, uh, I, I, I recommend we, uh, give final plat approval for this re-subdivision, at least of these two lots.
Okay.
It had to, this is the one that had to redo the line, cause it-
Well, I, it's, I, I don't know the, the owner, um, I guess they're building a home and just trying to get the house-
Out of the-
Out, out of the, just had to re-subdivide a, a little lot to do this. It's, to me, to me, it's more just a, uh, formality, what we're going through here on this. It's not like a new subdivision, it's an adopted subdivision, it's just changing a lot line within that subdivision between two lots.
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second to-
A second.
Approve as, as some, as requested. If nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Okay. On the, uh, on receiving no bids, you have three options, you can rebid, you can, what was it, one with the other? One was to do what you're asking, which is get informal bids and, and then go with the lowest responsible bidder. The third one is do force account, use force account to do the work, we can't do that. So, uh, if no, if no one is opposed, then, uh, I think that we're appropriate to move forward as he suggested, which is to do, get three bids when that project comes up and move forward, but, all right. Uh, next is to consider approval of twenty twenty-two county rebuild Alabama.
Twenty twenty-one, it's just the twenty twenty-one annual, uh, rebuild Alabama annual report.
Tell us about it, okay.
And it's just something that needs to be put in the minutes, uh, just approving, uh, this, and I'll, I'll give a brief update, I won't go through all the numbers, there's just a lot of numbers. But it's just a summary of our, our rebuild for our fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Again, we had six projects, uh, on that plan for that, for that year.
And rebuild, the rebuild money is about eight hundred and fifty thousand, you ever take-
Now, yes.
Per year.
Yes.
And so the first thing you're gonna tell us is you've spent one point six million dollars during this year, but that's carryover money from the prior year, I think.
That's correct, and we have a remaining balance, and I'm, just is around three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of rebuild, and we got about, uh, and I gotta check with Karen on, on this actual number here. Um, um, cause the way the, let me just go through the, the projects, what we have here. We have, uh, si- the six projects, uh, there was Beaver Dam Road, uh, Go Million Road, Counter Road eighty-five, Counter Road eighty-nine, uh, and Strong School Road, which we, uh, is one of those projects, and then Counter Road one oh one. Um, now the Beaver Dam Road, Ca- Go Million Road, and the Counter Road one oh one project were completed all this year, but they were processed after the actual, the twenty twenty-one fiscal year was, um, over. So they're, they are complete, now, um, they are striping those, I say they're complete, they're striping those today. Um, we've got roughly ninety-three percent on Counter Road, ninety-one, uh, one oh one completed, that, that's actually turned up to be a pretty nice project. They're all nice projects, but, uh, we are a hundred percent, uh, let's see, we're ninety-seven percent on, uh, Go Million Road waiting, striping, and ninety-two percent on Beaver Dam. Waiting, striping, and we're supposed to get that this week on those projects.
Are you doing that striping with your crew?
No, it's, it's, it's by contract, everything was by contract. And that's one of the things about the letter, the original letter we sent in at the beginning of the year, years in, was to, uh, to satisfy the fifty percent minimum, um, lit contract. That they were all lit at a hundred percent, um, for this fiscal year. Um, our Counter Road eighty-five and our Counter Road eighty-nine, both those had, uh, federal funds in those, and, uh, those are a hundred percent. They are striped and, and completed. Now, the, the only plan we had left over was the Counter Road forty-three project, which it is now on the twenty twenty-two year project. But we got roughly, like I say, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars left, um, in those, and, uh, and about five hundred, a little over five hundred thousand are federal aid exchange funds, um, right now. Those will be, to be carried over. Now, the, the total mileage, less the Strong School, you're about eight and a, eight point three five miles of resurfacing, what we've done with last year's, um, twenty twenty-one fiscal year monies, so.
So this year you'll have the, uh, five hundred thousand federal aid exchange plus the-
Four hundred, yes.
Four hundred thousand plus the three hundred and something fifty thousand that you're carrying over, plus the eight hundred thousand new money.
New monies, that, they come in by the month, and you, you think this money comes upfront, but again, we have to, that's why we waited, cause you just can't just start from something that, that, cause we didn't have the money to, to do a lot of the projects the first year, so.
So hopefully we'll see eight hundred thousand to one point two millions expended in this fiscal year we're in now, something like that by the end of the year.
There's a lot, a lot of work coming up, yes.
Lot of that on Strong School Road.
Yes.
Should see immediately. What about other projects you have in the hopper, anything else you wanna give a note on?
Point A Road, you know, we're looking at doing the Point A Road, that's part of that fiscal, uh, twenty twenty-two plan, um, but, uh, just the, the one oh seven project, I spoke to some landowners here that, that live in that area, we're still waiting the, the final, we've made an offer to them, which was by law, by the DOT. We had to make the, the offer by the appraised value, and we're waiting to see, uh, uh, whether to reject some of that, or, or go ahead and get a counter offer back from that landowner. So we're waiting on that, it's in the year, um, and it's, and it's a large company, but, uh, we're waiting to s- the, uh, a letter back, whether they're gonna approve or reject that, that, um, deal.
Is it a individual, did you say it's company?
It's a company, it's a company.
And you'd already had conversations, so we know about where we're, we-
Yes.
We, we should be-
Yeah, we're, like I said, I, I hate when the keep, we're just, like, we're, it's like we're steering our wheels, but we're not, and we're, it's, it's a process we're going through, but it, like I told the landowners, as soon as we get this, we're ready to, to, to close on the property, the title opinion's been completed, so there's nothing to stop it on, on that end, once we get to that point, so.
Once they say yes, you can sign documents.
That's right.
Uh, is Coleman Road in any of the stuff that we're talking about?
Yes, yes it is.
Tell me about, tell me how, which one that is, or how-
Coleman Road is the, W Coleman Road is up there off of, uh-
Sandy Land.
Sandy Land, I keep wanting to say steam plant, but Sandy Landing, I think I had, that was the issue about the, the, uh, transportation plan, but-
Is it rebuild money or other funds?
It's gonna be rebuild, we're gonna do about ten percent, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to start doing about ten percent of our monies to, to put toward construction, um, to help get the latest folks on, on hard pavement, so.
Good, good. All right, I had a question about it, and I just didn't know the status of it, so, that-
It's one of the highest density roads, and I said we gotta, we gotta, there's a process we go through to determine those, so.
All right, anybody have questions on the rebuild Alabama report and other, other things that Lynn's updated us on? What else you have?
I just have one more, I've had a landowner up around the Harmony Church area, that's gonna pay to have their road, uh, paved. And I've already given them a cost estimate of work, um, it is a road that we maintain, so we will utilize our annual bid to, to do that with their monies, uh, that they, they, they bring into us, so.
All right, keep us posted on that one, so we know when it starts, so.
It, it just brought, it got brought about two weeks ago, so, I just know it's been-
Any other questions or comments on Lynn's report?
We won't have to tell them, we have to come up some money for eighty-five or whether they're wearing it out.
And we got a traffic count, I know there's been a lot of, lot of issues, or a lot of complaints about the traffic due to the closure of three thirty-one on that road, and we have, we have installed Roma strips um, at a, at, at an intersection there to help make them stop at a stop sign. Um, um, but also we've got a traffic count out, and I hope to have those numbers. We've had to get a renewal on our, our license, and we're just wait renewal for license, we can actually upload that data to, to have it for the, for the sheriff and everybody else.
It looks like some of our local traffic i- i- that's being rerouted because of the bridges going up McDaniel Road, which is dirt road for ways and then becomes paved, but I appreciate the work y'all are doing to keep that maintained and passable. It's, it's not used to the amount of traffic it's seeing right now.
Yeah, yeah, and we also trying to get some patrolling out there too, because there's a lot of people just in a hurry to get where they're going, they're not paying attention to tractors or people, or people trying to take care of livestock.
But, but residents tend to, and also residents tend to be aware of, the state has a, a, a official detour. Um, and it is all on state, state routes, but of course, people are gonna take the, the least-
These are mostly locals.
Mostly locals, I think.
This is lo- mostly local traffic, you do have some, but they, a lot of the traffic that comes in is not local, it's usually being, uh, brought into the lake, you know, campers and stuff like that, so I mean, that's, the GPS is bringing them in, so, I mean, that's, that's not an issue, but it, the locals is, you know, other counties cutting through, you know.
We do have future roads, I know in the county that's gonna be clo- the state's gonna close in the future some roads, um, for construction, and that's gonna, it's gonna create a, some more issues for us, I just know that although they have an official route, and that's gonna probably cause us some issues later down the road on some other roads as well, so.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Lynn, we appreciate the good work. Glad to have the holidays behind us and get back into a routine, all right?
Thank you.
Other staff, have anything? Susan?
No.
Eric? Okay. Miss Cotton?
I don't have anything.
Miss Allen?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Um, we have Alabama Little Bridges, we'll be returning this weekend for, uh, rodeo at the arena. Uh, they do not have a charge for that, it's free admission, great bunch of kids, they start at nine in the morning, um, if you're looking for something fun to do to watch some good entertainment, then come on out to the arena.
I know she posted, uh, the next six or eight weeks, and you had something almost every weekend, it's pretty busy at the arena.
Just picking up, yes.
All right, uh, Commissioners, what do y'all have? All right, motion to the general will be in order, thank you.